The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you. Uh, will the city recorder please call roll?
Mayor Jacobola.
Present.
Council President Steinhebel.
Here.
Counselor Dykstra. Counselor Olferz.
Here.
Counselor Workman.
Here.
Alrighty, thank you. Uh, we'll move into consent calendar. Followed items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be not separate discussion on these items unless councilors so request. In that case, item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Agenda Lebanon City Council Agenda October ninth, twenty twenty four. Approval to award links dial-a-bus parking lot paving project. Uh, council meetings from September eleventh, twenty twenty four, regular session. Resolution emergency sewer service outside city limits. Uh, ten twenty-one Airport Road and one forty Russell Drive. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, public comments. Citizen may address the council by filling out testimony card like this one. And prior to speaking and handing it to city recorder, each citizen will be provided up to five minutes to provide comment to the council. Council may take an additional two minutes to ask clarifying questions. The city recorder will accept and distribute written comments at speaker's request. So tonight, we, I only have one, so LDA.
Is it on? Okay. Hello, I'm just updating, um, this month I wasn't here last month, so we have a couple little summer things that we didn't get to touch on yet, but over the summer, uh, events that we had, we have been able to track at least sixteen different towns that visited Lebanon over the summer for the different events that we had. We had up to thirty different vendors at our events from different places. Uh, we have up to date, have done twenty-nine different events or activities so far this calendar year. We have assisted in our downtown merchants with a hundred and forty thousand dollars in grants over the last year and a half now. Uh, Strawberry Plaza does have all new art boards with the plaques up of their names of the artist and the names of the paintings, so we have finished that. The murals, uh, we just have one left, so we've got four of them that are completed now. We're working on the downtown trick-or-treat and our one-mile-five-k Halloween hustle that will be this month, or yeah, the month of October. In the last month, we've gotten four new businesses in the downtown that are now all open and operating. And we are currently working with Main Street America on a workshop for our downtown merchants that will take place November the eighth that will, um, give them some training on maximizing their online presence, because a lot of our merchants don't know a lot of the different programs that are out for making their flyers and marketing. And we also worked with the Chamber and the BLT for two different downtown building tours last month. That's all I have for the downtown. Any questions?
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just to clarify, when I said LDA, it's Lebanon Downtown Association for people maybe didn't know. So, just give me one second here. Anyhow, we'll move on to public hearing ordinance bill number twenty twenty-four dash zero nine. Did you want to read that?
I have to. Alright, tonight's hearing will be pursuant to the quasi judicial proceedings of one ninety-seven dot seven nine seven. At the start of each hearing, council members, please disclose any ex parte communications, conflict of interest, or bias. If you have questions as to what that is, please let me know. Uh, the applicable substantive criteria for this hearing will be addressed in the staff report to council. Testimony may be in either oral or written form, but must be directed towards the criteria outlined in the staff report, the comprehensive plan, or the city's land use regulations. Any issue raised must be accompanied by statements and evidence sufficient to allow the the council and party members an opportunity to respond. Please note that failure to raise an issue, including a constitutional issue, by the close of the hearing will prevent an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals.
Okay, so I might have went out of order here a little bit, but public hearing is now open at six oh five. Do any councilors want to wish to declare ex parte contact, conflict, or bias? Is there any, anybody in the audience that objects to the notice that was sent in this case or to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case? So, we're gonna pass it off to for staff report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, counsel before you tonight is a proposed annexation of a zero point one eight one acre parcel on the north side of West B Street, just east of South Ninth Street. Uh, the property address is seven eight-five West B Streets. Um, the property is located within the city's urban growth boundary, and it's contiguous to city boundaries on the north and south property lines and is designated within the city's comprehensive plan as residential mixed density. The applicant is accepting of the initial zoning identified within the comprehensive plan, which is residential mixed density, which means that upon annexation uh, and the accepting of the initial zoning, it is already, uh, planned for the urbanization and the density is identified for the zone. Um, and it being contiguous to, uh, city boundaries, it is eligible for annexation. Uh, the planning commission conducted a public hearing on September eighteenth and found that the application complied with all the relevant criteria of the development code and the comprehensive plan. Um, the exhibit within the staff report and the agenda item that was published as part of the council packet thoroughly goes through every single decision criteria, but general eligibility is that it is contiguous to city boundary, it can be served by utilities, um, and that the initial zoning is accepted without having to go through any comprehensive plan or zoning changes. Um, city utilities are located in Ninth Street, um, and can be extended through B Street to service the property. Um, and so it meets all of the general criteria, and so the planning commission unanimously recommended that the city council approve the annexation. And that is what is before you tonight, is the recommendation to approve the annexation and assign the zoning of residential mixed density, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council of staff? Alrighty. At this time, we'll ask if the applicant for testimony? Not present? Well, the council will not have any questions of applicant. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favors annexation? Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition? So, with the public hearing is hereby closed at six zero nine. All further discussion will be limited to the council and staff at this time. Any discussion needed?
I don't think so.
Okay. This one's, uh, pretty boring, huh? Uh, will the city attorney please read the title of the ordinance?
Ordinance Bill number two thousand twenty-four dash nine, a bill for an ordinance of annexing and zoning property following consent filed by the, uh, with the city council by landowner in said area pursuant to O R S two two-two dot one twenty and O R S two two-two dot one seventy, file eight twenty-four dash zero two, Eric Maddox.
Alrighty, is there a motion?
I still move.
Motion's been made to approve. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay, we'll move into regular session. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five, resolution declaring a state of emergency in anticipation of significant impact on water supply and water quality for the city of Lebanon. Uh, city manager, please give your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. What we have before you tonight is a resolution declaring a state of emergency in just what we said, in anticipation of significant impacts to our water supply, basically our water treatment plant. Um, the U S Army Corps of Engineers is gonna continue with the drawdown this year. We've had several meetings with them. Um, voiced our concerns with the fact that our treatment plant is rated for fifty, the N T U uh, on a sustained average, and the N T U is the clarity of the water, uh, with a maximum of a hundred to a hundred and fifty, no longer than forty-eight hours. We saw over triple that last year, double that in a lot of cases. Uh, we are preparing this year, uh, to put together this state of emergency so that it gives us the ability to, uh, financially, uh, pay overtime to do what we need to do to ensure that we have safe drinking water. We believe this to be uh, an emergency based on what we saw last year, and unfortunately, the judge in the case has, um, basically said that they're gonna go through with the drawdown, uh, unless there is quote-unquote a state of an emergency. Their idea of a state of emergency is when that happens, uh, for us, if, if we're to that point, it's too late. Uh, that the state of emergency is already, it's, it's too late. It's like a switch. Uh, we're either making water or we're not making water with our treatment plant. So, what you have before you is this resolution, uh, to declare a state of emergency, uh, uh, from the significant impacts that we are likely to see, uh, similar as what we saw last year. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you briefly describe some of those issues that we encountered last year, just so everyone's on the same page?
Sure. So, last year, there was multiple times where we were not able to push enough water through our membranes, uh, because of the turbidity. Uh, when I say enough water to meet demand, so our plant is rated for four and a half to five million gallons per day. Uh, on average, in the wintertime, we use about two. Uh, in some cases, we were only not gaining any in our reservoirs, and we're just barely able to keep up with the demand and not be able to fill the reservoirs. Uh, we saw significant impacts on our membranes, uh, having to backwash all the time. Uh, we'll have a later, um, agenda item. We spent four hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year in new membranes uh, to try and offset some of the pressures that we were seeing in across the, the racks. Uh, we had to have somebody come in and actually reprogram and take all the safety features off of that so that we could push enough water through the membranes in order to get it out. Now, if we get water through the membranes, it's safe, it's drinkable. Uh, the one thing about our plant is if you can't get water through the membranes, there's really no boil water notice because you can't get water into the system. So, that's the, the, I guess, the, the upside to the membranes is, is they're really efficient at taking the stuff out of the water, but if you can't get the water through them, then you don't have water. So, that's, that's kinda some of the things that we saw. We saw, oh, like in our sediment basins, typically we'd see six inches of sediment over a year to two years. We saw three feet in two months. So, those are the kinda impacts that we're looking at. Um, and again, I think it's important to note that we're gonna do everything we can, just like we did last year, and we're gonna make clean water. Uh, but in anticipation of this, we're ruining our membranes, basically that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of membranes. I can't say exactly what the lifespan would be, but a normal lifespan on our membranes, especially with the water shed that we have, is about fifteen years. Twelve to fifteen. Uh, we think we can get fifteen out of them because we've got such a pristine source. But it's likely that this is going to cut that in at least half, if not more. So, we believe it to be a, a state of emergency. Uh, anytime we have to spend five hundred thousand dollars, I, it was budgeted last year, but that, that's, that's a big hit, so.
Sweet Home Doing Anything?
Uh, not to my knowledge at this point, no, no.
Can you, uh, please just touch on briefly why we have the type of plant that we have?
In turn, well, we have that type of membrane. Number one, it's, when you push water through it, it basically cleans it. It's chlorinate. Uh, you know, we use a little bit of chemical in it to kinda coagulate some of that before it goes across the membranes. Um, we selected that type after a year's worth of study out there, rather than a conventional plant. Um, it's been around, it's been proven, and, uh, it's been, for all intents and purposes, a really good plant. So, that, that's the main reason that we chose that style, um, was due to our water source. Uh, you know, we've got years and years of data of what turbidity looks like after storms, but nobody could have predicted this. Um, well, they should have predicted it, but nobody did predict it, and so we're left um, basically with something that's beyond our control, so we're taking every measure possible to get out in front of it and be prepared.
What's the lightly, likely outcome of us passing this or repercussions that are cap? Are we, are we looking for them to, hey, pay us if something goes wrong? Are we, do we have a chance to actually stop them from doing it with this?
I don't know that it will stop them from doing this. Um, I think what it does is, is basically puts them on notice that we believe this to be a state of emergency if you move forward with this, any more so than what you've already done. Uh, I don't think they take, took into account what this does to well over a hundred thousand populations drinking water. That's Sweet Home Lebanon Albany. Uh, I don't think that was taken into account. Um, and if you listen to, i- it was all about salmon, which nobody wants to see the salmon go away, but
Or the people.
Yeah, the other side of that is, is there was not a lot of thought put into what was, what was, this was gonna do to drinking water source.
And Ron, if I could add to that?
Yes, sir.
Um, I mean, part of it is, it gives us more flexibility in the budget and moving money around in an emergency. That's the biggest thing. Um, because of the budget restraints that we have. This way, the money's available if we needed it in an emergency. Um, there was a new order entered by the district court judge. It didn't change a lot, but it does allow for a, uh, a temporary stop of the drawdown if, you know, if they show that, you know, water's being affected negatively or health is impaired, well, that's what Ron's saying.
It's already gonna happen.
It's already late, too late, you know.
We, we have
What we can do at that point. But what this does is gives us the flexibility. It, it also doesn't mean that, you know, in some state of emergency declarations, you're seeking to go up and get money from the state. You know, we're not there yet. Uh, we'd have to go through the county and the state to seek any state funding for it. This just gives, uh, gives us the flexibility to, uh, react to an emergency in the event that we anticipate it happening.
Okay, thank you.
If we were to the point where we said, hey, we, we can't make water, we're three, four, six, eight weeks away from the river clearing enough, enough for us to do that. So, when you say we're gonna declare a state of emergency, when the emergency happens, it's too late. So, we need to be prepared for that.
Funny how that doesn't seem pretty obvious to, to people who are on the other end of the
Agreed, agreed. But we will do everything we can, uh, just like we did last year. We're gonna put up, um, water quality reports out for the public. Uh, we've got a webpage created. Julie's got a webpage created that has links to what the corps is doing. Uh, it'll have this on it. Um, and people will call, and that's okay, and we'll, we'll answer their questions. If we're pushing water out the door, um, it means it's safe to drink. Um, we, we won't push anything out that, that's not. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. I, I would like to just add that this was not an easy, uh, conclusion to come to. There was a lot of, uh, talks with different parties, the corps, uh, you know, our staff, looking at all the data. It wasn't a, uh, off-the-cuff type of decision. It was very well thought through, and, uh, I believe it is a, the right path to take. So, um, will the, uh, is there any other questions or comments? Okay. Will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution of two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-five, resolution declaring a state of emergency in anticipation of significant impacts on water supply and water quality for the city of Lebanon.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve? Second.
Motion's been made to approve. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to measure one-ten, Lynn County deflection program update. Uh, Police Chief Frank Stevenson, can you give us your report?
Chief Frank. Uh, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Uh, what I have before you is, uh, my maximum effort to help, uh, uh, explain a little bit of the House Bill four zero zero two, um, which is, uh, basically in essence, um, replacing some key provisions of measure one-ten. So, what measure, or what House Bill four zero zero two, uh, did was reintroduce the criminal penalties for possession of user amounts of controlled substances, which, uh, went, uh, and this, this all began, well, it began September first is when it was really implemented, um, making it again a crime and getting rid of the class E violation portion. Um, and every, it, oh, yeah, it, it's, it's kinda one of those things where it's now labeled a unclassified misdemeanor, or what they're calling a drug enforcement misdemeanor. Um, what, what this does is it gives officers the capability, uh, to now arrest subjects, um, who are in possession, uh, of user amounts of, uh, illegal narcotics. And they, uh, this is all based on officer contacts. Um, they come in contact, have user amounts, instead of issuing a, a, a violation, which really there is no accountability for, they are now going to be, um, cited into the Lynn County Circuit Court, which they will enter into a, uh, program, uh, a deflection program, which the county is still currently uh, working, uh, through. Um, they, they have a, a projected date of twenty twenty-five of when they will get the deflection program kinda outlined and how that's gonna look. Um, but, you know, as stated, um, it's, it's, it's a step in the right direction in, um, uh, what happened with measure one-ten, which basically decriminalized all, all user amounts of narcotics. So, um, within my memo or, or information provided to you, it kinda outlines everything that, uh, is there for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
If our jail was open, would this give you more teeth to actually contain somebody if they had these, or would they still be cited and released?
No, they're still gonna be cited and released, and in fact, um, a majority of these cases will be, uh, cite and release on scene, uh, unless there's other crimes that are, uh, kinda com- in combination with them, so. But a majority of them will be cited and released into courts, which, which, again, it will force, um, those who are in possession to actually go to court. Uh, if they fail to go to court, then there'll be a fail-toappear, which then we can, um, uh, address at that issue, uh, or at that time.
But cumulative effect, if the jail was open, if you had contact with these people a few times and they hadn't appeared, and I'd imagine sometimes you're gonna find other charges when you
Oh, yeah. More times than not, we're gonna find additional charges, but yeah. Um, yeah, if, if the jail was open, we could obviously lodge them until we can transport them over to Lynn County, but in a majority, in most of these cases where they're user amounts, um, they're gonna be issued a citation on curbside or, uh, in the field to appear in Lynn County.
Thank you.
So, I mean, basically what we're, we're kinda waiting for at this particular point in time is for a, a deflection program, and, and the big question is, what do you deflect them to? Um, there's, you know, that's, that seems to be the big, uh, the big hurdle at this particular point, but
This is gonna be a major problem for you.
No, this is actually, this is actually, uh, in, in the win column for, for us, 'cause before it was, you know, um, it was, it was a violation, much like a traffic ticket, so there is no accountability for the, the person who is in possession. So, this at least will get them, uh, the ones that are contacted and are, uh, and do have narcotics on them, will get them going in the direction that they need to go. So.
And one of the things I'd say is just a little bit on, on some of the statistics that have come back. Um, Oregon and Washington are the only, uh, states, or excuse me, maybe Alaska as well, are the only states that where the increases in deaths from opioids, including fentanyl, have gone up, which went up on average of twenty-seven percent, uh, since two thousand and twenty-two, as opposed to the nation that has actually gone down from eighty-four thousand total to eighty-one thousand total. So, uh, draw your own conclusions.
Nobody could
Chief, will, uh, will they be required to appear in court and do the diversion program?
Yeah, so, yeah, once, once they, yeah, they'll be required to appear in court. Once, once they get to court is, uh, first-time offenders will be entered into the diversionary program or um, whatever program that, that is in place at that particular point in time, so.
That is, like, it's not just they will have to appear in court, they will also have to go through the
Correct.
Treatment.
Yeah, and, and once they've completed the treatment and it's success, it's a success, then the charges are, are voided at that particular point in time, so it doesn't go on their, on their record.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, no questions, comments from council? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Move on to, uh, you'll have a moment at, towards the end for public comments. The next, uh, up for, on the agenda is low-income utility rate relief program. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council. So, what we wanted to do tonight, uh, with the town halls coming up tomorrow, um, is have a discussion on the existing low-income utility, uh, discount that the city has. Currently, for low-income assistance, the city offers ten percent of the existing utility rates. Um, about sixty customers across the city utilize that ten percent discount. In order to obtain that discount, they have to go through a process with the Community Services Consortium. They're the ones who do, um, uh, income verifications, um, for a multitude of programs, right? Not just with, for the city of Lebanon, but um, for other utility sources as well, and they can provide monetary assistance, um, utility relief, uh, stuff like that. But they get a, a card that they can bring back to the city of Lebanon to turn in to us, and, and they get twelve months of this utility um, discount. Um, that ten percent doesn't amount to a lot. Um, it, you know, certainly, anything helps, I guess, but um, what we wanted to talk about today is that is a fairly low amount compared to some of those around us. So, we wanted to get a feel for what the council, uh, was kinda looking for in a, in a low, low-income utility discount. Um, and kinda get a consensus, I guess, before we could put together a, a resolution for you and bring that back, uh, at a future meeting. I can tell you that, uh, we have a list of about ten cities, uh, that we put together. Five of those cities have no utility discount that we could find for low income. The other five range from one at thirty percent discount, uh, and all fi- all four of the others have a fifty percent utility discount. Five-zero. Um, so our ten percent for those around us is extremely low. Um, doesn't mean that we can't leave it if that's the council's desire, but, um, I think staff certainly believes that it might be time to revisit that ten percent.
It is ten percent higher than none, though.
It is ten percent higher than none, you're right. So, um, for some around us, um, and I won't necessarily list the cities particularly, but in one city, a fifty percent discount can amount to just over sixty dollars reduction on their utility bill. For another, it's about fifty-four dollars. Some of these cities also, um, in order to fund this program, certainly have, um, kind of a, it's a, a small fee, I guess, for low-income assistance. So, every, everybody else is kinda paying into a, a pot of money that is then used to provide that low-income assistance. So, there are lots of different options out there. We don't have that sort of a thing, obviously. Um, any, any of the ten percent discounts is just a um, ten percent off the, off the overall fees that we receive for the utility funds currently. Um, with that, I can certainly answer any more questions, but we're kinda hoping for, I guess, a council consensus on what you might like to see.
Is there any feel for how much, I mean, ten percent, there's probably some people go, that's not worth chasing, not worth doing. Do, I, I know it's algebra, and there's probably not an answer. What's the, what's the math?
We do
People are eligible, or do we have any clue?
We don't have any clue on that regard, so the, the income So the, the income figures are set by the state of Oregon. CSC uses those for their analysis. I do believe that with the city services fee coming down the pike and a potential increase in that low income discount, I do think we would see more people taking advantage of that program, making it a little more beneficial, I guess. You know, right now, 10% discount's about $12 for us. So it's, with CSC being in Albany, and some of the hoops that folks have to jump through, I think sometimes it just feels like that's an overwhelming burden to, or a mountain to climb that is not of interest to them at that point.
I get it.
So I, I think, I honestly think that it would be safe to say we will at least double what we have, so that 60, you know, those 60 customers might turn into 120. I couldn't tell you if it was going to go much higher than that or not, unfortunately.
I don't think anybody here wants somebody who really can't afford water not to have water just because we're imposing this fee, but we're imposing the fee to raise money. There's math in there, which I know I do math, not algebra. I'm not opposed to 30% at the numbers you're talking about, but I don't know how anybody else feels.
Yeah, my question was going to be, how did we land on 10%? Did we just pull that out, or as a base?
That's been around for years.
I mean, for, for us.
For us. That's been around for years. In fact, it was, I'm guessing, just based on the way the code's written, it was done when the storm drainage utility was created, because that's the only, only place that it shows up in code. It doesn't even show up in our water or sewer code. And one of the things we would do is kind of get a consensus of what the council feels that is a good number to, you know, put out there. And then we would come back with a resolution, a policy, and vote by resolution, and that would be across the board of all the utilities, including city services fee. So whatever that is. So there's, for the folks who need the low income assistance, this would be a pretty big deal for them, because it would essentially, they wouldn't feel the city services fee. Do we think we're going to have a whole bunch? Probably not. Brandon and I have done some, some different math on it, and, I mean, I think our worst-case scenario was $30,000 out of each of the utility funds. And in all honesty, we can't project or, you know, figure that on a revenue side, whether we're going to hit that, we're within 1% to 5% usually either way, so...
I should add the, to that 60, those 60 customers that I referenced, that's 1% of our, of our existing utility customers. So I mean, it is a, it is not a well-used program. Some of it may be an issue of not knowing that the program exists, or not knowing that they could go through this. We do, are due diligence in the office to relay the information to customers when they, when they make, when they tell us that, you know, this is a struggle, or certainly around lockout days, we try to list that as a resource, but 1% is a very low adoption for a program like this, in my opinion. But I couldn't tell you what's driving that.
I think I would agree with Dave. I'm not adverse to 25% to 30%, especially when you're talking about the level of our rates. 10% just, you know, that, that's a pack of cigarettes. Yes, I know how much those cost.
Well, I guess that's about right now. I don't know, I think we talked about the math of if somebody's low income and they're, well, if they're living in an apartment complex of some kind, that's on the, that's on the owner of the car. There's aren't apartment complexes, or many rentals that are paying their own water bill, are there?
Right. You're correct. I'm thinking more about like the manufactured home parks where you have a lot of seniors, a lot of seniors that live in them, and they're already really struggling to make their bills. I think this, 10% is, yeah, $10 or $12. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking more at 25% to 30% to where it actually has a meaningful impact to where it's worth going through the process of filling out the paperwork and submitting it. That's kind of where I'm at.
I, I think the other thing that we would probably look at is any capital A affordable housing units, structures, or we would probably reach out to those, you know, complexes and have them go through that process and just do an automatic on those, because they're already in that situation anyway, right? So, so there, there could be some more, but we've, we've kind of done some rough math on the back of the napkin, and I, at this point, you know, we don't believe it's going to impact the budget substantially in either utility.
I'd be okay with bumping it up to 40%.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm happy with the, probably the 25, 30 that kind of we're looking at. I mean, I could go 40. I, I think mainly, my biggest concern is I would like to see some of the, the availability of the program where you get your income verified. That really needs to be more available for folks in Lebanon, whether that's partnering with perhaps the River Center or another nonprofit in town, so people can go locally to get that done. I don't feel comfortable saying like, you know, hey, we have this program and you need to go to Albany to get verified for it. We should really have that in the city.
CSC comes out to Applegate and it works, and they can see people out there.
I can say we are working on, there are some options that I think are kind of rolling as far as bringing that within city limits to help folks have, have easier access to fill, to, to get into that program. But none of that's ironed out yet, so I don't, I can't really port it all out there for the moment, but there are some...
The numbers, I'm happy with whatever council consensus is, but I just, again, I really want to see that move back into town.
I'm having a hard time understanding a world where people actually have to go to CSC to do this. I mean, we have people do loans, buy cars, sign papers, and we never see them. It's all secured. How come, how come they can't do that?
There is a, an electronic process, I guess I'll call it, with CSC. They, they can do a lot of it up to a certain point, and I think up to that certain point, and I'm, I'm speaking not having gone through it, so I couldn't tell you every process, but I believe that it actually requires wet signatures. So they have to go to the office to sign once everything's submitted, but they can submit, you know, their income verification and whatever other documents are necessary electronically while, and then let CSC go through their process before they have to actually go to the office. And, and certainly, you know, we've, we've discussed internally among staff as to whether or not that process could be brought in-house. I think the biggest concern there is that's people's income, their paperwork, that's a lot of information that city staff should not have easy access to by any means. So having it go through a company, having it go through somebody like CSC or another kind of built-out program like that is, is a lot more secure and safe for everybody.
One of the things that CSC does also when they do these is they not only look at the water bill kind of thing, they'll assess the entire person and see what other benefits, needs, programs to help them that they may not be aware of, that, and it gives us an opportunity to, to help them do that. That's one of the big reasons for CSC, and they come out to Applegate and meet clients out there all the time, so they wouldn't have to go necessarily to Albany to, or Corvallis to go sign papers, or that sort of thing.
Well, as long as we, when we do this, we're passing along that information as well, and there's some sort of regular schedule, then that's, that's fine. I just, again, if you're talking about people who are already low income, and, and now you're adding that burden to go to another city to travel, to make an appointment, to take time off work, I just, I don't like that. I mean, it's great that we're looking at this, but it's just a lot of barriers for someone to, and a lot of hoops for someone to jump through, so...
With all the apartment houses going, and we're going to have a lot more low-income people applying.
Well, a lot of those, if it's an apartment complex, a lot of those have one master meter for the complex, and so there isn't an ability for the business to apply for a low-income discount, because at least with CSC, it's only for individuals and residences. So those apartment complexes wouldn't, or the tenants therein would not, would not qualify for the program, at least for our utilities. Doesn't mean if they're not paying their own power, they couldn't use CSC to receive a utility discount on their power, but at least from our perspective, they wouldn't, they wouldn't qualify because the apartment has a master meter.
Unless, of course, it was an actual capital A for...
Right, and we've talked about some other options that we can look at for affordable housing complexes or units that we'll bring to you at, at another day probably, as we develop the resolutions.
So if other cities char, have extra fees on a regular ratepayers bill to help fund a program like this, is that something we can add to perhaps like development to, like if a new certain size of a development comes in, where they're front-loaded with paying some of those fees? Just thought I'd ask the question.
I might point at those two up there and say, I don't know.
Can't be like a system development charge of sorts to... I just had to ask the question.
Water's infrastructure.
Yeah, I don't think it'd meet the...
I think the other problem with that would be you definitely have an ebb and flow in development, right? And so if, if you are trying to fund a program on development, and you have an off year or a lower year, and the program starts to dip into, you know, money you don't have suddenly for that program, then where are you taking it from, right? So that, that could certainly present you with a different set of issues.
Just thought I'd ask the question.
Yeah, no, that's a great question.
The idea is to be prepared for the town halls, that, and basically, as long as we know that there's going to be some kind of a program, we don't have to give a specific number, we can say we're still working through the details on that, but we just want to be prepared with that, and, and come back and clean up some of the code and have a policy in place so that it's, it's there for all of this and get a code cleanup. So I think we've got enough to...
Yeah, it's a timely discussion. It's good to have in our pocket.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's worth noting, too, that if we're talking about a 25% discount, someone whose water bill right now is $100, and they qualify for the discount, their water bill, even after a fee, regardless of, you know, where that fee lands, their water bill will actually be less than it is now.
Agreed.
So that, that'd be important to point out to tomorrow.
Pretty close to less, even if they already qualified for their 10%.
Yeah.
Sorry. I think if we get the question tomorrow, we assume we will, then we'll say that, you know, we've had this discussion, council seems to have a desire to change what the existing rate is, but we haven't ironed out fully what that, what that will be permanently. Is that where we're at?
Yeah, and we'll bring back policy and resolution in November, probably, to clean that up.
So I think, it looks like you got what you needed. Okay.
I think so.
All righty, any other questions or comments?
Thank you all.
Thank you. We'll move on to approval for award project membrane cartridges for Lebanon Water Treatment Plant. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This is a cleanup that kind of got missed. So back in April of this year, excuse me, after the drawdown had kind of concluded, Jason and I looked at our treatment plant, and he made the recommendation that we put a bunch more membranes into it so that we could, like I said in an earlier agenda item, reduce the pressures and try and make sure that we can make enough water this year. In April, we also went out and posted for a sole source procurement. We did that because we wanted to use the same membranes that we have today from the same manufacturer, so that we were getting like-for-like on that. So we went through that process. We knew we wouldn't pay for it until this fiscal year, which it was budgeted this fiscal year. What we didn't do was bring back the contract for approval from you guys, even though it was budgeted and approved in the approved budget. So this is basically a cleanup, just to make sure that we've got all of our i's dotted and t's crossed to approve the purchase from H2O, which has already happened. So I can answer any questions on that if you'd like.
I know, nothing.
It kind of goes back hand in hand with the emergency declarations. Some of these things come up, and it's, you gotta, you gotta jump on them in order to make sure you get the, go through the process, because they don't just have them on the shelf, so they've got to make sure that they can get them to us, and it just got missed. So I can answer any questions.
This is a subject we've talked about quite a bit in the past, so if there's no questions or comments, is there a motion?
Second.
Motion's been made to approve. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things tonight, unless you've got questions. We attended legislative days back in September of some, I don't remember the exact date. Myself, the mayor, Kelly, Jason Williams, and our lobbyist, Sean Tate, we got to meet with a lot of different congressmen and senators and pitch our story about where we're at infrastructure-wise with our wastewater plant, talk about housing, and some of the goals that they want to meet with housing. So we got some good reception out of it. I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Well, I was just going to say that we went up there the 23rd through the 25th of September, and, no, it, this is new for the city of Lebanon. They, they never really went up to these events, up at the Capitol to, to shake our tin cup, and to make relationships and find funding sources for, for future projects. And we, there, there was a good reception, and those relationships are starting to be built. There, there are actually a couple of times where they're like, we've heard of you, not me, but the city of Lebanon. So I'm encouraged by it. I want to continue the building those relationships. There's another one coming up in December. We'll go up and, and talk to anybody that will listen. I said that to, I think it was a senator, and he, he started laughing, he goes, that's what you need to do. So, no, it's, it's encouraging, and it's just a different way that we're doing business in the city of Lebanon. So if we're given an environment, and we have to work within that environment, we have to play by those rules, we're going to use those rules to, to the city's advantage, bottom line. And you got to get out there and make, and build those, those bridges. So anyhow.
That's great. Thank you.
I have a question. And before, before session begins in January, are there any bills that we're like looking to push, or is there an update that we can get maybe from Sean before the session kicks off?
Yes, we will get an update from Sean, and we're looking at stuff that was on the council priorities through LOC. Sean's making contact with LOC so that they know what we're pushing on, and that they can help get us in the right direction, get us to talk to the right people. So yes, we will be doing that. If there's places where we can testify, we're going to testify on bills that are coming up and that pertain to, anything that pertains to us, but mostly we'll focus on those five goals that the council had on LOC priorities.
Fantastic. Just thought I'd ask. Thank you.
Absolutely. Another thing I had, town halls tomorrow night and next Tuesday. We have the library set up. Should we see more participants than is accommodating in the library, we also have the senior center set up, so we can move over there and continue to hold the town halls. We're just going to play it by ear. We have everything set, ready to go, so we'll see how that plays out. The other thing I had was, second meeting in October is now scheduled for noon. Is there anybody, would anybody prefer to have that at 6:00? Could we, I know there's, there was some, some talk about that. What's everybody's preference?
I'd advocate for 6:00, just because I think that agenda so far is, I assume we're going to talk about, we're going to debrief the town hall sessions.
Correct.
I feel like there's a solar update in there.
Yes.
What else?
Couple of probably bid awards. There'll be strategic plan with our strategic planning consultant, be a 15-minute update on that, and I think there was, if I remember right, oh, yes, possible property discussion and executive session, so there are some things. Solar will take a little bit to get through. Joe?
Just sounds longer than an hour.
You're talking about the 23rd?
The 23rd, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good at 6:00.
I don't like it, but I'll go along with it.
Noon works better for me, but I'll do my best.
Carl?
I'm off that day, so anytime is good.
I prefer noon.
I'll be up.
Two, three.
Okay, okay. I lost.
Three, three to three.
We hear noon. Yeah, tiebreaker.
Tiebreaker.
I, I hear that there's a tie that needs to be broken.
I prefer noon, but I will do, I will, I will defer. I'm saying my preference, I'm not digging in my feet.
We're, we're going to have to go with noon.
Fine.
Okay. No problem. It might be, it might be more than a lunch hour, maybe a lunch two hour. I think that's all I have tonight, unless anybody's got any questions about anything else. That's all I got.
All righty, thank you, Ron. Items from council. Does anybody have anything?
I just wanted to point out, I've been keeping my eye on Bob Smith Park, and there hasn't been any sleepers down there, and a lot less rubbish and clotheslines being strung out, so I think the chief and, and all the, the officers and community enforcement
So I think the chief and, and all the, the officers and community enforcement that are keeping that park cleaned up.
Good to add that, thank you for cleaning up the Eagle Scout Trail. That's 44 North adopted trail, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Thanks for the cleanup both from PD and I think Public Works. I'm sure Public Works was involved too, so it's appreciated.
Any other items? All righty, I'll give a second opportunity to public comments. Sir, did you have something you wanted to, please come up to the microphone? Okay. All righty, is there any other public comments? Press? All righty. You need to come upstairs so it's on the record and make sure the microphone's on by the little push it. State your name and, and the ward you're in.
Red light on.
Brian Durham, resident 195 Harrison Street for the last two years. Since you're the gentleman that seems to have the intense knowledge of the Lebanon water supply, any worry about N-Tech from the posting we got with the air quality from N-Tech about a year ago?
Is there? No, they've gone through and done their studies and it all came back. They were, they were approved by the EPA. So we didn't follow up anymore after that. As long as the EPA approves it, we don't have the mechanisms to do that, but yeah.
Everything's good. Just concerned when you get a flyer in the mail after you just bought a home in town like you're two blocks away from a chemical plant.
N-Tech's been a great steward of our community, they, they do their diligence.
They were required to do an extensive amount of monitoring for air quality and I believe that that was all, all turned out fine.
Okay, excellent. All right, now I can say at least I've asked somebody.
There you go. You bet.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next scheduled council meetings, October 10th, 2024, Town Hall, 6:30 PM, Lebanon Library. And then October 15th, 2024, Town Hall, 6:30 PM at the Lebanon Library, unless we need to move over to the senior center. October 23rd, 2024, special meeting. Noon, it was even on here noon, so San Am Train, San Am Station here. November 13th, 2024, regular meeting, 6 PM at San Am Train Station. We were going to move into an executive session, however, we'll, that's going to be postponed and we'll, we'll move it from this agenda to, to a future agenda. So with that being said, this meeting is adjourned at 6:53.